Howdy, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. The time is about 6:00 PM. And we're here for a budget workshop with the Capella City Council. We're going to be listening to water and sewer enterprise funds and special revenue funds. There is a quorum presence on calling the meeting to order. First item of business is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak on any matter other than an agenda item must sign a register, list of residence as provided by the city secretary on a table. All that's been done. Each speaker must state his or her name and place of residence. Presentations during the citizens' appearance shall be limited to two minutes maximum. An additional speaker time may be extended for another two minutes with the approval of a majority of the council members present. There will be a cumulative limit of 20 minutes allotted for this special meeting. Those persons signed up to speak at the citizens' appearance shall be called upon in the order they have signed. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual group, or corporation. We do have one person that has signed up to speak. That's Mr. Schaaf.
He's over there.
Hiding over there. So, did you want to speak now or at the end of the meeting? We actually have two citizens' appearances.
I would first speak now.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
I'd also like to request the additional two minutes since I'm the only person here. My statement might get a little bit longer than two minutes.
Counsel? All right.
Thank you.
Oh, before we get started, at the end of the four minutes, the timer will sound and the city secretary will remind you that your time is up. And at that point, we would ask that you conclude your remarks within 15 seconds. So, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Okay, my name is Dave Schaaf. I'm at 215 Westman Drive in Capella. I'm a retired industrial chemist with 45 years' experience. Many of the people here are aware that I have presented concerns to city officials for the last three years for the city's charges for residential sewer wastewater treatment. The basic issue is that for over 28 years, the city of Capella has been basically unfairly charging homeowners for services not rendered. The issue being that charges are based solely on total water used, albeit with a current cap on sewer charges of 14,000 gallons. The problem is that of that 14,000 gallons, anywhere from an average of 7,000 to 12,000 gallons are not sent to the water treatment plant and are consumed solely for irrigation purposes. This amount of water goes down the storm drainage system and receives no treatment. Ostensibly, the city apparently believes that it is too complicated to resolve this issue quickly and responsibly in a short period of time, and is proposing not to address a winter averaging solution to reasonably determine how much water is sent to TRA from any particular household before 2023. However, all the data needed to determine this is readily available from any residential billing statement for sewer charges for the months of December, January, and February. This leaves one to speculate as to the possibility that the potential loss of budget funds by correctly allocating charges presents itself with other unknowns, even though all the surrounding cities in the area do so now. The city of Capella has a much higher base rate than most, if not all, of the surrounding municipalities, and only provides 1,000 gallons of water as a base compared to more commonly found 2,000 gallons. While the city of Capella charged for sewer service at $224 per 1,000 gallons is lower than most cities and provides a cap of 14,000 gallons, proposed to reduce by 1,000 per year for the next five years. It is arguably much better to pay a higher rate on a much lower volume. Likewise, in that vein, there is nothing to be gained by providing a lower cap on usage charges if those charges are real, if those usages are real. By way of example, my current winter averaging use is only 2,000 gallons per month, so I am paying for 12,000 gallons of sewer water treatment at $224 per 1,000 gallons, or $27 extra a month, nine months of the year, amounting to an extra cost to me of $243 a year. By comparison, the new proposed rate for 2021 is 3.34 per 1,000 gallons, a 50% rate increase. I will be paying an extra $40 or an extra $360 a year. However, with the proposals including winter averaging in 2023, even at the higher rate, I will not be paying anything extra for those nine months. My charge for the 2,000 gallons would be $26 per month, or a total of $312 annually, as opposed to $792 annually without winter averaging. In addition, the 2022 budget report shows an increase in the water sewer fund balance for 2021 of $1.2 million, which is an increase of about 6% on a total budget of $21 million, leaving enough money in the fund to fully finance this area for a whole year. The 2022 proposed budget also projects a slight increase in this fund. In other words, there's plenty of money available to solve and rectify these billing inequities, if needed, while these issues are being resolved. In conclusion, I see other items of concern that I won't bring up now due to time constraints. Suffice it to say for now that I see absolutely no justification for increasing rates to residential consumers before a winter averaging system of basis is implemented. Likewise, I see no benefit in the long run to even having a cap at all on sewer water gallons usage if it's correctly determined. Reducing the cap in the meantime is a woefully inadequate solution to unwarranted service charges in lieu of correctly and honestly determining them. Likewise, the base service charge and base water allotment should be compared to those of other areas, cities, and reviewed. I will also note that the stormwater charge was doubled for 2021 to $2 a month, generating an additional $200,000 in funds to the city. As a final comment, it is wise to remember that you don't engineer the averages. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Did we have anybody else sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving on, item number three is our water and sewer budget. Yeah, I thought you were going to say something. Okay. Ms. Tean?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present the water and sewer budget to you tonight. Before I begin, I would like to remind you that the purpose of this workshop is to walk counsel through the proposed budget and not to ask counsel to take any actions on the information presented. Now that that disclaimer is out of the way, I'd like to begin by first sharing a few overall comments about the water sewer budget or the water sewer fund. First, the water sewer fund is an enterprise fund, which by definition means that the charges for services and the revenue generated by the water sewer fund are required by governmental accounting standards to cover the full cost of providing the service. You may also hear that the water sewer fund referred to as a business-type fund. This is because the full cost of providing the water and sewer service includes charges from Dallas Water Utilities, who provides our water, charges from Trinity River Authority, who treats our wastewater, and for all other annual operating and maintenance costs, which include salaries, supplies, annual maintenance and repairs of the water and sewer system. Our water and sewer system includes the pump station, the two lift stations, and two water towers, as well as equipment used to service the system. In addition, the revenue of this fund needs to cover the cost of maintaining or replacing the water sewer system infrastructure, as well as the capital cost to expand the system, for example, the water redundancy project. It's important to note that the water fund does not receive any funding from property taxes or sales taxes. And so, keeping all of that in mind, I would like to provide you an overview of the proposed 2022 water sewer budget. If you want to take a look, on page three, I'm going to start with expenses. Page three in the packet or page two if you printed out the information online. So, as I said, I'd like to begin with expenses. And as is shown on the slide, current year or the 2022 budget that's proposed totals $19,540,912 for expenses of this fund. This is about a $1.2 million increase. And the increase is attributed first to an increase in the utility operations budget. The utility operations budget is, the increases are related to the inclusion of a wastewater condition assessment, some site improvements at the DeForest Lift Station, valve replacements at the Village Parkway Pump Station, and replacing a CCTV camera that's used to inspect the storm and sanitary sewer lines. Another portion of the $1.2 million increase is for the cost of water. Dallas Water Utilities charges the city both a demand rate and a volume rate. Both of these rates are being increased. The demand rate, just to explain the difference between the two, the demand rate is a fixed charge that the city pays whether we take one gallon of water per day or 18.5 million gallons of water per day. And I use 18.5 because that's what Dallas Water Utilities, that's our contracted price that they have to provide us per day. And so, we pay based on that 18.5 million gallons. The portion of the cost related to the demand rate is increasing about $391,000. The volume rate is also increasing, and that cost is projected to cost the city an additional $127,000. So, the increase in water is about $518,000. Another item that's increasing, and the reason for the increase in expenses, is the debt service principal and interest payments. If you recall, this April, we issued another $7 million in bonds. And so, the principal and interest payments will start making those principal and interest payments on those additional bonds in the fiscal year 2022. Now, these increases are being offset by some decreases. The first one is the cost of sewer. Although TRA, TRA or Trinity River Authority, they increased their rate to us by about 4.6%. Public Works has been taking steps to reduce our inflow and infiltration. And so, they have, they're comfortable reducing our projected flow to TRA to 3.5 million gallons per day. It's currently at 3.8, but our actual is coming down. If you recall, they have done a lot of assessments of the water and sewer lines. We did have the spike that began in 2014 that took us some time to figure out and repair. And there was a line that was damaged, and that caused our increase in flow.
Some of the council members may be unaware of some of the impact of that. And if you will look at the top of page three, the blue chart, and you see where it peaked in 2017 and 18, that was partially, well, that was pretty much due to what she's talking about. We had a massive leak in a sewer pipe that was letting basically fresh water flow into the pipe, and we were being charged by TRW for that. And so, that, anyway, sorry to take you by the spotlight.
No, you're fine. Right, that actually, when that first occurred, it cost the city about $1.1 million that first year because our flow increased because rainwater was getting into the system.
A lot of rainwater.
A lot of rainwater. And then, the final decrease is in utility billing. If you recall, council passed moving the credit card fees from the city paying the credit and debit card fees to passing those along to our customers. And so, that is saving the city, and this fund alone, $115,000. So, the utility billing division decreased by that amount. And then, as you can see, revenues are really projected for the current year and the proposed budget to be relatively flat. So, this next slide, it shows expenses in basically two different ways. It's showing you expenses by division, and then it's showing you expenses by classification. A couple of things that I'd like to point out first is the increase in services is about $681,000, and that's what I've already shared with you. It's the cost of water that's going up, and then the reduction in the sewer, and then, of course, that's where your principal and interest payments for your debt are recorded. The other area that is increasing is capital. Capital is going up to $600,000. Now, last year, it was only $10,000. And if you recall, we shifted to putting capital on hold and freezing positions during fiscal year 2020 because of originally Rule 3.334, but then it was COVID that kind of took over. And so, when we were in the process of preparing the 2021 budget, we kept that philosophy in mind, so we didn't budget a lot of capital. And as I mentioned, the increase in the capital, again, is in utility operations, and it's that site improvements at DeForest Lift Station, the valve replacements at Village Parkway Pump Station, and then replacing the camera that's used to inspect the storm system. And really, all of the other areas as far as maintenance and supplies, and the salary and benefits, and the transfer out are remaining relatively flat. And then, this is showing you proposed revenues. And I think the only thing I would add here is that water and sewer sales, so the revenue generated from the sale of water and then the providing the wastewater service, that generates 97.6% of the revenues of this fund, which means that the other areas, other revenue, water and sewer fees, and the interest income make up about 2.4% of the remaining revenue of this fund. At this time, no water sewer rate increase is being proposed, and that is something that we look at in the fall. And the reason that we wait until the fall is we really don't have final numbers from Dallas Water Utilities and TRA until they take their rates to their governing bodies, and those governing bodies approve those rates. So, right now, the rates that are included, that we believe be cost increases, are what they're proposing to their governing bodies. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about water sewer.
Do we typically address that in the November-December timeframe? Thank you. Counsel, questions for a kiln?
So, just to clarify and make sure I understand, so the rates Dallas is proposing, the source is proposing that the rates are going to go up. We are not changing ours currently, but we may later. Is that, or it may be proposed to increase them later?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
If those changes do, if Dallas does increase their rates, will we need to raise our rates?
So...
Or what will be, I guess, the decision point?
So, that would be a decision of council. I would bring forth the information to you. Historically, the previous council, what they had, the guidance I had been provided is that they were going to pass along increases from Dallas Water Utilities and TRA.
Okay.
Because previously, prior to 2016, which 2016 was the first rate increase in 21 years. And so, what had happened is we took a 15% increase in 2016, we took a 13% increase in 2017, and then about an 8% increase in 2018.
Okay.
And so, to prevent those kind of large increases, that was what previous councils had said, let's look at it every year and pass those on if necessary.
Okay. That's helpful. Thanks, and sorry to have to give the history lesson.
I enjoy giving history, so that's fine. I don't mind at all.
John? Yeah, just to clarify, I guess, because I'm not really familiar with this, but in terms of the proposed budget for the total of water sales, that's based on what we had for, I guess, what is it, you said 18.5 million gallons, was it?
No, so, no. So, 18.5 million gallons is the most that the city can request from Dallas Water Utilities in one day. That's what we're limited to. If we need to request more than that, we have to call Dallas Water Utilities and ask them to increase our daily demand. And if we do that, then our demand rate or demand cost will increase. So, our current demand rate is five, current demand is costing us, it's 5.3 million, almost 5.4 right now, it's going up to about 5.8. If we, so that's, for each million gallons, it costs us $391,000 about. So, if we have to increase from 18.5 to 19.5, we're going to incur another $391,000 for sure, plus on top of that, the volume. So, we have to pay, just like y'all have, or you have the base rate on your water bill, that's kind of the demand rate. And then you have the amount that you pay for volume, that's what you're paying per gallon. We also have to pay that for Dallas. So, our rate structure is very similar to how we're being charged from Dallas.
Okay, and is that the same with, even with the sewer service rate that's going?
So, sewers, the sewer rate, they, it is based on, we, or Public Works provides them what they anticipate our daily flow to them will be. Historically, they have, the last couple of years, it's been in the 3.8 million gallons per day is what they've been saying we are going to send them. And then Trinity River Authority then bills us based on whatever rate they are charging times 3.8 million gallons per day. And that's times 365 days, and that's what we pay. So, their rate is based on maintenance and operations, and then it's also based on the interest in sinking, which is their debt, because they have to issue bonds to maintain the infrastructure. And, I mean, just like we maintain our water and sewer system infrastructure, they're maintaining their infrastructure, and they have operating and maintenance cost of their system also. So, all of that gets passed on to their member cities.
If I remember correctly, I think it was starting this fall that we were going to try to go and implement the winter rate within, or was it not this fall?
No, so...
Or this, actually, after taking this winter average?
Right. So, during the March 23rd council meeting is when we took, when council passed the increasing block rate structure, I provided a timeline for the winter averaging. Originally, the rate study had winter averaging being phased in over five years, decreasing it 1,000 gallons per year. And the purpose of the consultant recommending that is to give us time to evaluate, because you don't know how habits are going to change, and you're decreasing billing units, but you still need to raise the same amount of revenue. And so, if you're decreasing billing revenue or billing units, and you need to raise the same amount of revenue, then the rate is going to have to increase to compensate for those reduction in billing units. So, that's one piece of it. And then, what we heard was we want to implement winter averaging sooner than five years. So, we looked at, what are we doing right now? We are in the middle of a software implementation. The software implementation is to go live in December, January timeframe of this year. And so, what we did is, we kind of did a timeline that we were, now, we did a timeline that basically showed, right now, we're in the middle of implementing and testing the system, right, that we haven't implemented. They're setting it all up, and that's going to take us through December or January. And then you need a normalization period. Whenever you go live, you want to make sure that your system is functioning properly, that everybody is trained. We know that the utility billing module is the most complex and difficult module. It's more complex than the financial module that we've already implemented, and we know the issues that we ran into after going live with that. So, after go live, we were looking at the summer of next year, of 2022, through the fall, to start educating our public. We don't want to, we don't want to implement or change things on them without giving them an opportunity to understand what's coming their way, to educate them on things that they can do to change their watering habits during those winter averaging months, give them an opportunity to acclimate themselves. And then, that would take us into using, the base period would be the December of 2022, January and February of 2023, to collect that data, determine what their winter average would be, and then implementing them a winter average in the spring of 2023. And again, that's all, it's so important that we have the ability to run parallel systems. Our current system is not set up to winter average. If I can't verify that my bills are accurate, I risk losing the public's trust, and that's not something that I want to do.
I think I remember now, the last time that we, sorry, I kind of forgot for a minute there, but I think last time what we talked about was, yes, we were going to wait a little bit, even though we are decreasing by 1,000 gallons per year for the next five years, but we were going to try to go and make that sooner to convert that into winter rate once the system is up and running, if I remember correctly, because you were talking about how you did not want to do that at this moment because the system is not up and running yet. But I thought I remember us saying that we're going to try to implement that, or sooner in five years, before we actually get to the five years of decreasing 1,000 gallons per year.
Right. And I think, I mean, I think that's what we're doing, because the five years would mean that we wouldn't implement it until, I mean, 2025 would be when you'd go down to 9,000 gallons, and then the next year, you would look at winter averaging. We're saying, you know what? We're hearing that we want winter averaging sooner. Let us get through the software implementation. 2023 is sooner than 2026, and that's where I feel comfortable, and I think staff feels comfortable. We're not saying we don't want to do winter averaging. We want to do it. We just need to make sure that we do it in a systematic way, that we're planful, and that we do everything that we can to make sure we don't lose the public's trust. I can't have bills go out wrong. I have to be able to make sure that I have a system that matches the system I have now so that I can double-check that those are correct.
And I'm going to go ahead and say what I said last time, which was that, that's great that we're decreasing 1,000 gallons per year incrementally, even if we do that, even with 5,000 gallons, and I think Mr. Schaaf precisely pointed to that, which is that we're still overcharging residents for sewer rates that they're not actually being used. So, definitely, you know, we need to get to that sooner than later for sure, because I understand about getting the system up and trying to make that right. But again, we're still, if we're waiting almost three, four, five years, we're still charging, overcharging citizens for sewer rates that they're not actually being used.
I appreciate your feedback, and I'm here to serve the council, so whatever direction I get from all of you is the direction I'll take.
Well, as she said before, this is a discussion that we'll have when it comes time to set the rates in March, and that discussion can be had then.
Well, it is a discussion we are having, and can be had in the future as well, right?
Well, and our last discussion, we already came to that conclusion, so I'd prefer that we move on at this time. Anybody have anything else, issue?
Yeah, thank you. Question for you. Looking at the budget, 8.6 percentage, about 1.68 million is the salaries and benefits for the employees. How many employees in that, in the department?
So, there are five in utility billing and, 16.5 in utility ops, so 21.5 total in the water sewer fund.
All employees' salaries and benefits covered through this budget, or anything used from the general fund?
Oh, no, no, no. So, the individuals who are servicing, the people in utility billing and the people in the utility ops that work on water and sewer are funded out of here. They're not funded out of the general fund. There is one assistant director who is partially funded, that's where we get that 21.5, that's the full-time equivalent calculation. Half of his salary comes out of the water sewer fund and the other half out of general fund. Right, because he splits his time between doing street projects and working on water sewer items.
So, just to understand, I heard number two, number, 21 and 16, which one?
It's 16.5 are from utility... It's sixteen point five are from utility operations.
Okay.
And five are utility billing. So the total of the two divisions is twenty-one point five. And that's the total number of employees in the water sewer fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don?
A couple of more clarified questions, just to make sure I'm following. So you said one point two million or one point three million dollar increase in expenses, right? And I look at this, and it looks like that's over the adopted budget from last year, one point two million, I guess.
Correct.
Uh, and just to clarify, since I'm ignorant on this point. So we got the amended budget in here, and from what I can tell, there were some previous year funds that came over and maybe one time, I'm assuming that was a one-time event or something for that amendment. So I guess, can you help?
So, um, the increase in the budget amendment is primarily for incumbents' carryovers.
Okay.
So it's things that were, um, had purchase orders out in fiscal year twenty that then are brought over, and the corresponding budget is brought over.
Okay, so the adopted budget is still sort of the correct baseline.
I, that's, yes.
Right, okay. Uh, and then, so just for the twenty-two budget, it appears, the way, I mean, if I just take revenues over expenses, it appears it would fund itself even without increasing rates. I mean, it's budgeted to do that, is that, because you've got the cost escalator in there, but nothing we are charging.
Right.
I mean, so it still funds itself as is, right? Regardless of what we do in the future, is what, is the way it's budgeted, is that, is that fair?
That, that is fair to say. Um, one thing I would like to point out is water, water and sewer revenues are not like property taxes in that we know what the assessed value are, what the assessed value is, and we know what our property tax rate is, so we know what we're going to get. Water and sewer, we base this on a typical year. Well, if it's really rainy, we're not going to meet budget. If it's really dry and hot, then we're going to exceed budget.
Got it.
And so just because we say this is what we think we're going to collect, if I knew exactly what we were correct, I would not be working here.
Okay. Okay, that helps, uh, just, just to clarify.
Just, yeah, to kind of.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate your questions.
Thanks.
All of your.
Yeah, one more follow-up question. With all that employees, I don't see any employees from the frozen, uh, employees count from the water department. Um, what about the operational hours, any reduction in operation?
We did not have any reductions in operations. And all through COVID, even when we were closed, we had somebody here working, answering calls. We were going out and meeting customers at their meter and helping them. We did not lose any service.
Thank you.
I had a kind of side question, I don't want to get us off, off the trail here, but how did the, now that we've had our electronic meter reading in place for a number of years, how has that impacted our budget?
Um, so I, I was actually talking with the supervisor of the water area today. Um, and historically, before we implemented the water meters, we were, we, every city has water loss. We were seeing back in two thousand and eighteen, double-digit water loss. Today, after implementing them, it's about eight percent. Average is ten, so we're doing better than most cities at the eight. So it's helped, so we're billing for the water that we're actually pulling, um, which is great. It's also, I think, improved our customer service because it helped during the storm. We were letting, um, Public Works and the fire department know where we were seeing leaks. Uh, I know that we went and turned somebody's water off and they weren't home. They didn't know that they had a huge, you know, flood, that water coming out of their backyard. Um, we left door knockers. So I think that this smart, you know, this system has been, you know, instrumental. Um, census, I don't know if you've read it, I think Hannah sent it out, but they, they included us in an article, you know, of how we used the system during the storm to help save water and prevent more property damage. Does that answer your question?
It does. I know that coming out of the winter, I had a, I kept getting an alert on my phone that I was exceeding my daily ration that I'd set for myself, and I could not find it. And I could not find it, and I could not find it. And I finally took some time and turned on every sprinkler zone. And I discovered that even though the sprinklers were working, I had a broken pipe that was putting a lot of water into the gutter. And you didn't see it until it'd been running for a while. So I was actually losing quite a bit of water. And if it hadn't been for the alerts, I wouldn't have spent the time to, to find it, so that worked well.
Thank you for sharing that, we like to hear those stories.
See, um, just another, you know, just to clarify, since this is a revenue, or since this is a fund, no matter how we do the accounting, our expenses are going to have to match our revenues.
Yes.
Just to, you know, this is, this is one of those, this is, in terms of fund accounting, that's what's hard to get our handle around, that this is, you know, this is not part of the, the city operational budget. I mean, it, well, it is, but it's not part of our general revenue fund.
Right, again, it's no property taxes or sales taxes are used to fund the water and sewer system.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Kim? Don?
Apologies again.
No, please.
To that point, so you said a while ago, let's say it's a very, what'd you say, if it's very wet, we lose, I say lose money, we do not raise as much revenue, is that right?
Correct, because people aren't wiring there.
I'm assuming there's a fund balance or something that, if there is a negative, it takes care of that, is that right?
Right, so there's a fund bal, fund balance policy. And so fund balance is general fund, water sewer is retained earnings. So I just want to make sure, make that clarification. Um, and the, the retained earnings policy for water sewer is a hundred and eighty days of expenditures in it. And we, we, all right, we have that, so we.
So it would cover any shortfall, the dividend, okay, that's all.
So you guys aren't going to see the fun of the summer when it gets a hundred and five degrees for, um, thirty-five days in a row, and Kim is sweating whether we're going to exceed our demand rate and raise all the rates. So, um, that always gets really fun. The way that we do that, you know, we do have large water tanks. And if we're getting close to the point where we're going to exceed the demand rate, we'll start tapping into those to keep the demand rate down to save, you know, save us all money in the long term.
Well, and that, that's one of the reasons that you passed the increasing block rate structure was to take steps today to impact the future demand. So we're hoping that we create new habits with people, that they'll use less water so that impacts how quickly we have to raise that demand rate.
But when it's a hot, hot, hot summer, tensions get kind of high in the water department, so. And it's all over that demand rate. Thank you very much.
And the other thing I'll note too is the less restrictions we put on people, the more conservative they are with water. So that's the other thing.
Yeah, historically, we had, uh, years, maybe back years ago, they tried to do like a mandated watering schedule.
I remember that.
And the, the water usage actually went up.
It went up, yeah.
Because people were super watering on the days that they could.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, on to item number four, special revenue funds, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight, I'll be going over, um, the special revenue funds for you. So the City of Capella's special revenue funds are used to account for revenues that are restricted for, uh, special and particular purposes. At this point in the budget preparation for fiscal year twenty-two, if a project has not been identified, that fund will have no expenditures. Uh, revenues for these funds come from identified and restricted sources. And if we collect unexpected revenue or identify a qualifying project during the year, we will amend for it. Tonight, we will be going over the hotel occupancy tax, the municipal drainage utility district, infrastructure maintenance fund, Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery, and the Capella Recreation Development Corporation. Any of the other special revenue funds that are not, that we are not going over tonight are in your packet and have been identified, have identified revenue sources and authorized uses in the summary at the top of the respective pages. The hotel occupancy, uh, can be found on page six of your packet and on page two on the online document. The hotel occupancy tax special revenue fund is restricted to the promotions of tourism and the convention hotel industry. Revenues come from a seven percent tax levy on the cost of the lodging. We retain taxes from our agreements with hotels and short-term rentals like Airbnbs. The net revenue are projected to be, uh, two hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred. And, um, the total expenditures are the sixty-seven thousand three hundred. Those in, um, the increase in expenditures are the art service organizations that you approved in our last workshop. Do you have any questions about the hotel revenue? Or the hotel tax? Okay, all right. On to, wait, wait, oh, okay.
Don?
A quick question, just in general, not necessarily for you, but the fund balance that we're, we're, is there a, a long-term plan or not? I mean, I know it's restricted use and everything, but you know, it continues to build. Is there a long-term plan for what we would end up using it for or anything? I mean, I'm just curious.
So the answer is yes.
Okay.
It's going to vary fund by fund. You're going to find some of them are being sunsetted out. Uh, the hot tax, quite honestly, is new, so it's.
Well, specifically, I was wondering about, about the hot tax in general.
This one is, is, is emerging.
Okay.
And it's still not, I mean, we're not at, we're not at the, the steady state point a bit at all because we've still got hotels under construction. Um, but, you know, the, it's, it's clearly set up to, to fund part of the art center. And, uh, Tamara can probably tell you what else I'm, I'm not, I mean, all I know is the, the art center is the primary funding, but what else was there?
You can do a convention center, visitor information center, promoting sporting events. You can do a transportation system for tourists, you can do directional signage. Uh, there is an amount, they limit the amount you can do on advertising, uh, historical society, and then the arts, it's limited to fifteen percent.
So a couple of years ago, we did a trial transportation system that paid for some, I think some of the funding for that came out of this. That was the transportation that she was talking about.
Okay, okay, I was just curious, because I'm, I would assume it's going to continue to build as we get these hotels. And so is there just sort of a broader plan? Or have we not crafted that yet? That's all I was curious about.
Probably haven't thoroughly crafted it until we see what we're going to end up with, with the hotels come online.
Just sort of curious.
And as we start, you know, if we get directional signage, then we can take that from this fund.
Just got a question, John, aren't, aren't all those usage have to directly promote being related to the hotel and convention activity?
Tourism, yes.
Tourism, right.
Mm-hmm.
So how are some of the things that you're talking about going to promote tourism?
They do allow you to use some of that for arts. And they do allow you to use some of it for historical.
Again, that also goes back to promoting tourism and hotel activities.
It can, yes, but it does not, those.
Not that it can, I think it's a requirement.
On the, uh, convention center, the advertising, the directional signage and all that, yes, it must promote tourism.
I think it's all of them. If you're looking at all the condition criteria, is everything that you do has to be promoting hotel, tourism, and convention activities?
It's, just asking, it's, uh, from a question standpoint. Or is the question, because in the arts, they advertise throughout the region. People come in, use our restaurants, they may come and stay at our hotels, that type of thing. Uh, this fund is new to us, it's been used throughout the state and tested on multiple occasions as far as the use of the arts, the use of attraction of visitors to your community. So it, I'm just trying to understand what the, the question is.
I was just trying to understand how that's actually tied to the promoting tourism and increasing hotel and convention activity. I just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I just, I mean, that's legislation. So it's not, we're not making those rules. The legislation is saying this is what you can use it for, so.
Again, I would, to your, to your question, this has been around for a long time. Communities throughout the state of Texas have used it to fund the arts, to, uh, to fund these different programs, the states that it can say it's been used. The state has assigned that the fact that you have programs that bring in people from outside of town could help promote, for example, stays at the hotel. So that's the connection that the state created between the statute and the rules and the way that we can use them.
And I guess, um, I guess, John, I, I, I hear you, would love to understand, like, um, do you think the uses that we have that are utilizing these funds don't fit in that area? Or I guess I just wanted clarification on that.
So I, I was reading about this.
Right.
And, and that's why I was trying to get the connection as to how that actually justifies using that fund for what you're talking about, because it specifically talks about it has to be directly related to promoting tourism, convention, and hotel activities. But even when we're going back to the, even the, the, I guess, the Art Council and other things, I just didn't know how that actually tied into promoting tourism and hotel and convention activities. So I, I was just curious as.
It's a connection that the state made as far as the relationship between the use of this fund and, and the sources, and how it can be allocated by cities. So we are not doing anything that other cities have been doing for a long, long, long time because the state's already said that's the connection.
Uh, yeah, I guess we have to talk to Bob about a couple of things, I guess, but.
Is that, is that a question?
No, no, I, I just talk to the law because the definition is there. And I'm just wondering if we're staying within the guidelines of what the man, you know, statute says. So I'm just.
We wouldn't be proposing if it wasn't in line with the statute, but we're more than happy to ask for Bob to write an opinion to provide to the council that this is appropriate use of the fund.
And, and the reason why I was asking is because I was looking back at all the requests for funding for the local community. And I understand H O, and hot taxes specifically for tourism and convention activities, hotels, so and so and so. So what I was trying to see is how, if we were to go and fund them, how that actually relates to promoting the tourism and hotel activities that stays within the guideline. So that's, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Sure, and, and I've provided an answer, but I will, per your request, I will ask for a written opinion from the city attorney to say that these uses are either okay or not.
Well, it is in the tax code that we can use it for the encouragement, promotion, improvement, and application of the arts, including instrumental. So the tax code allows it.
Yeah, I mean, the hotel, the criteria is specific as to what it says, that, that's why I was wondering about that.
We can send you the tax code if you'd like us to.
Kevin?
I'm not going to lie, it just sounds like you don't believe these people when they're sitting here trying to tell you exactly what the, the fund is for. And, um, I mean, multiple people have said, and the tax code is there. And I think that our hat should be making sure that we're not interpreting, you know, like, we're looking at that as these professionals' job. It's more about, you know, understanding, you know, we're, we're just looking over this stuff, we're not sitting there trying to interpret the law. That's why we hired these professionals to do that. But multiple people have said that this is okay, multiple, or other cities have done this. So I don't see the issue with that. I mean, it, I, it just seems like you are looking for a problem that is not there.
Or are you looking for a way to possibly fund other things, um, that, that could be considered arts? Like, uh, funding the corral or, or something like that?
Yeah, and, and in reality, because if we have the funds, and probably even Don was kind of alluding to, which if we, we're going to accumulate a lot of, a lot of these revenues from the H O T taxes. And we're not going to have a lot of spending, but it's strictly for certain things. But I was just trying to see how you had connected that to the funding that we were actually providing for some of the organizations to use that, uh, H O T tax revenue.
So you're, are you, are you asking how far can we push it and possibly use it for other purposes?
That is part of it. That is part of it, because
Yeah, I understand.
Just like looking at it right now, we have more than half a million right now, but there's not a whole lot we could use it for. But I was just trying to get the connection as to how you came up with using it for that purposes. purposes with the criteria that I'm reading here.
So I'm, I'm just going to say, sorry. I, a couple of different things, I mean, I think you're right. You're looking, you're looking for what has been justified in the spending, what might be some other opportunities for us to spend, and maybe it is, I, I, and I don't even think it's necessarily, I mean, you're welcome to talk to Bob, but I think that since it's kind of come up here, let's just, I, I'm all for the opinion from Bob, if you think that would be helpful, where he could give us a list of items or projects that this could be used for and, and, and what we have used it for so far, and maybe even what other cities have used it for, and maybe that just helps us level set going forward. Would that be helpful? I, what I didn't want to get, get into is how, like, to put staff on the spot of justification because it's, we, we as council have passed things, and so, and if they have brought something forward, we've made the ultimate decision of where we're, you know, how we're spending some of this money, and, and have done it within the purview of what are, we've been, we've been advised by staff, we've been advised by our council, and so I think we, you know, and that, that's kind of how we move forward. So again, if, if Bob's willing to do that for everybody, I think that would be helpful.
He'll, he'll do it because he asked it to.
Well, there you go.
I had a different question, so, and I apologize, I, I, this is in the scope of the hot tax, but it does have something to do, we're going to talk about on Thursday, so I apologize for jumping around a little bit. So under mayor and council expenses.
What page are you on?
And this is like page ten of the green tab, and this is, and I apologize for jumping, but it'll go back. So I see several things that are listed under the hot, you know, hot-funded tax, like ballet, ensemble, compel arts, council, you know, the things that we talked about in the first meeting, right? I had a question, so as part of the Chamber of Commerce, I remember a couple of years ago, when the chamber asked for an increase, they went, I think it was additional ten thousand dollars, and it was my understanding that that was for the promotion of our, you know, hotels and convention and things like that. Is there the possibility to use some of that hot, the hot tax funding?
In time, it could be if the Chamber of Commerce were to determine that they're in the convention and visitors bureau business.
Understood.
Right. At the time of that request, that was actually made to help try to promote Old Town.
Understood, okay.
So it was very specific.
Okay, very specific to Old Town?
Yeah, when they made the presentation.
Got it, okay. And that's, that's why I want to make sure that I had the proper background on that. So, because it just, there was just a natural connection.
With a convention visitors bureau, there are certain things that the chamber would have to do to qualify.
Understood.
And then they could make the request.
Okay.
And that would be where the funding could come from.
Understood, okay. Thank you for that clarification, and I apologize for jumping to the green tab there.
I'd like to go back to, to Don's question a few minutes ago about the, you know, the plans for the funds. You know, A, the art center is just coming online, and we're a year behind where we were supposed to be at this point. So part of the original plan, and, and, you know, plans can change, but we were going to let the art center begin operating, see what kind of budget it was going to use, and then start to find the, the hot funds to, to finance at least part of that.
No, we can't do that because you're limited on the amount of hot funds you can apply to the arts. It's only fifteen percent.
But it was going to be part of it. It, it could be.
It could be, but we, it's only fifteen percent of the collections.
Of the hot fund.
And we've actually allocated those to those organizations.
Yeah. But to, to the point of the, the question, to both, that, yes, as the hotels come online, that fund is built up. When it comes to the promotion, she talked about advertising, I'll just give you an example, do you remember that two years ago, I guess, we did the thirty thousand dollars for the billboard campaign? And different, right? We did those kinds of things to help try to promote people to come to our community and everything on six thirty-five. Those are the kinds of things that could be identified as projects that could be used. So to your point about the fund balance, until the initial discussions, granted, this is a new council, the initial discussions were along the lines, let's, let's, it's going to build, we understand it's going to build, let's see how these pieces come together. For example, this is all pre-COVID, so there should have been at least two more hotels that are finished by now. And, you know, we never planned on that income to begin with. Once, once we do have a pretty steady, okay, this seems to be where we are on the income and what's going on with the expenses from fifteen percent, historical society, let's say the chamber does convention and visitors bureau, then you'll actually know what you've got. And at that point, you can come back to the table, much like Mindy's done before, and say, okay, here's a advertising campaign that we can use, working maybe with the chamber on billboards or signage or those kinds of things, or print ads, you know, one of the things that council has said in the past that, you know, kind of smile when I say it's a compel bubble, we only really advertise for projects, if you will, or events or anything to just compel, but obviously the art center goes farther than that. So there will be a plan, but right now, it's kind of a hands-off account, other than what gets asked for specifically, in this case, by the arts and the store.
That's helpful, and I didn't mean to light a match on the prairie with all that. I was, I was just curious if there was a history on.
That's okay.
If there was a plan yet or not, that's all I was really curious about.
Those are all good questions.
You know, anytime there's a fund that looks like it's sitting there accumulating and not being used, it, it always does call the question, so.
Well, and I, and I somewhat assumed that there might be a plan, or, or there was a, some thoughts that had already been discussed, that, you know, this might be what we do in the future.
It's been discussed, but nothing's been formally put together.
Makes sense.
All right, any other questions?
All right, so we'll be looking at the municipal drainage utility district, which can be found on page seven of your packet and on page three of the online document. The municipal drainage utility district, also known as DUD, is a restricted fund used for stormwater control development and educational programs such as Earth Fest. This fund is used for erosion control and creek maintenance projects. Revenues from this fund can be, come from a fee on both residential water bills and business utility bills. Stormwater revenue has increased based on the stormwater rate study, which was presented and approved by council. The first rate increase was effective in fiscal year twenty-one. Revenues are projected to be a little over one million, while expenditures are sitting at eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Salary increased due to an additional stormwater specialist. Maintenance increased eighty thousand dollars due to increase in street sweeping and storm drain repairs. Services increased because of stormwater analysis. And we see capital outlay of forty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two for creek level equipment that will monitor the level of creeks, and a transfer out of four thousand, four hundred, which is for a vehicle replacement.
Any questions? I had one.
Okay.
Did any of this fund, was that, was part of this fund used for the G-five stream improvement? G-six, I'm sorry. One of the G-string. And the only thing, the, the reason I ask is I heard you say something about erosion controls, so if it's not coming up immediately, that's okay?
I want to say stream G-six was probably done with some drainage bonds that we issued.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Continue on.
So the infrastructure maintenance fund will be next. You can find this on page eighteen in your packet and page fourteen of the online document. The infrastructure maintenance fund is used for maintenance of city infrastructure. This fund is used for projects such as sidewalk repairs, sign and signal maintenance, pavement improvements, ADA improvements, and major projects. Revenues come from the voter authorized quarter cent sales tax and transfers from general funds. Projected revenues for fiscal year twenty-two are a little over five point six million. Projected expenditures are a little over five point six million. Revenues increased eighty-two thousand based on established maintenance schedules and the transfer in. You will see sales tax has decreased fifty-five percent from fiscal year twenty-one amended. Expenditures increased in fiscal year twenty-two due to an increase in maintenance. Any of the transfers in will have a corresponding expenditure. That's what you'll see in, from the revenues to the expenditures.
Any questions? I've got one, but I don't know how to ask it without opening up a, a whole nother topic. Does this reflect the proposed changes from three point three, three, four?
Yes. That's what the fifty-five percent decrease from amended is, we're expecting that to go into effect October first.
Don?
Well, I'll go ahead and ask then. So nineteen to twenty, there's obviously been a big drop because of sales tax change, right? Last year's budget, we were already, it looks like we were already accounting for the change, and it's being carried over this year, so, you know, just picking out big numbers, so four million dollar drop in capital outlay between nineteen, or fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one, or twenty-two even. That four million dollars that went away, what, how, how do we fund those capital outlets? Does that make sense? I mean, you know, because of the extreme drop in sales tax, we are having to, we have less capital to expend on infrastructure, so are, are we just having to delay projects? Or, or does that make, are you following my question?
I, I think I'm following your question. There, there's kind of two components, though. Remember when she talked about encumbrances from projects carried over?
Right.
Right, so, so there are projects that are funded out of the street sales use tax, right? And so those funds, those funds are used along with debt funds, for example, when Freeport was done, or in this case, when Bell Mine's done. So there's, there's a combination of funds, even the CRDC funds portions of some of those improvements through the meetings, for example. And then Water and Sewer picks up its cost for the Water and Sewer component of what's happening in the street. So there's multiple pieces that go into a capital project. As far as the fund and the sales tax reduction, what will happen is we will do less projects. There's, it's a direct correlation. We don't have the money, we're not going to go out, the council historically has not gone out and issued debt.
Right.
On the sales tax. The debt they've issued, like for Freeport and that you've issued for Bell Mine, those are really large projects. The Parkway plantation can be, are cash paid for as you go. So what will happen, it'll be just less paid for as you go, so what will happen is a year or two, there may be a storing up, and then we end up doing construction on the project. But there is, when we look at the five-year forecast and next year, you know, this year was kind of the introduction of it, and when you look at it next year as part of the process, you'll see the listing of all the streets and their rankings and the ratings, and then there'll be the recommendations for, here's the order that we'll do. And so there is planning that goes into that that matches up with the funding. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. That's, that's what I was just curious, it just means we won't have it, we don't have as many dollars to do the projects, and we're not going out and borrowing necessarily to fill that whole round thing.
Philosophically, right.
We're just, we're just not doing as many projects, or I say delaying projects, maybe that's not fair, but. Deferring until some later time.
For example, alleyways and streets, those are paid for, I was just, you know, and, sorry, alleyways and sidewalks. Of course, streets. Anyway, so instead of spending X, we're going to spend X minus something to get to Y. And that'll be, you know, instead of replacing this many linear feet of sidewalks in a particular year, we're only going to spend this much on this many of sidewalks. Mark?
No, we had that mandate to do ADA compliance throughout the city. I can't remember, was there a timeline associated with that, required timeline?
No. What happened was anything that, what we're doing is we're funding the ADA improvements as we're doing projects. So we're building it in, and what the feds have to do is basically, if they were ever to audit us, they would just see that we're making progress towards that particular plan. But it wasn't, I think.
There was a twenty-year, I thought it was twenty years.
Well, but the reality of it is, you're not, you're not going to be finished in twenty years, you're going to be doing, and it's making progress.
You're making an effort.
Do you remember the consultant when she came in and talked to us downstairs? It's, are you committing funds? Are you making improvements? Right, that type of thing. And if you remember in the conversation, those folks got caught, if you remember what we're talking about, where they weren't spending the money and they weren't making any improvements, and then they basically got forced into an order to start making improvements.
Right. Yeah, I, I was just worried that we, if we defer things too far, we might.
Understood, but from, anytime we're doing any type of improvements, and as we, even in the sidewalk improvements that we do, when they're at intersections or anything along those lines, we're making the ADA improvement, and that contributes or counts towards that list.
So do we know what we cut the sidewalk improvement budget down to?
Well, this, this year, what we're, I won't say the exact number on terms of sidewalks because I don't have it, but I know what we're talking about doing, you've heard us refer to the American Rescue Plan, the art funds, like Jennifer told me, I was surprised, it's over ten million.
It's ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars is coming to us. And so what we're proposing to do is to, over the next, because we, it's four years. And so anything that we were going to naturally cut back, we were going to supplement with art funds because they can be used as, for infrastructure purposes.
I'll, just a little color on that. We originally had a hundred thousand dollar a year budget to do sidewalks, and we did as many sidewalks as we could do for a hundred thousand dollars, and then we stopped doing them. And that was usually about three months worth of effort. And we were getting numerous complaints about sidewalks. And when we asked the engineering department what it would take to do that, the answer was, oh, probably another hundred thousand dollars a year. And we actually implemented that, and complaints went down to zero. So, you know, that was the kind of stuff, Don, that you're going to see, you know, we're going to slow down, we're not going to be able to do everything like we've been doing it, and that, that's the kind of stuff that we're going to have to be prepared for.
All right, Bijan?
Yeah, on page eighteen, maintenance, adopted budget twenty-twenty to twenty-one was two point one million, and amended budget was seven point six. Can you explain why the big change?
That was for encumbrance carryovers.
Can you explain a little more, carryover from?
Those are contracts that they had, contracts and POs that had been issued in the prior year, but they didn't get it completed by September thirtieth. So what we have to do is we close the books, we move it from one budget year to the next budget year. So they carried over from one year to the next. So he may have been in the middle of a street construction project, and when September thirtieth hits, then we have to move it to the next year.
Kevin?
The American Rescue Plan funds, are, is that a reimbursement type of thing, or is that a, or is that something that?
No, I'm only, I'm only smiling because we're still learning about what it is. The, the governor is not making the request till August the second. And then we're not sure how long it's going to take the feds to get it to the state, but then once the state gets it, we don't, we won't see it for another thirty days, because he has to turn it over to us, the state has to turn it over to us in thirty days, and it's only half. We only get the, the first half in the first two years, and then the second half, they're providing information. They're providing information as far as lost revenues, expenditures for, and the pandemic response and those types of things. They provide all that information to the state to basically shore up, to see what the funds are going to be used for. Then once we receive them, this is where then we get to allocate them according to what the council and the city have determined, how they want to be accounted for. And then, just real quickly to Bijou's question, if we just didn't put together the little list when we did the amended budget for the encumbrances, I know that list was part of that process. And if you'll just provide that to me tomorrow, we'll give it out to the council tomorrow. Because I really think what this question was, can you tell me what those projects were?
$5 million of those funds, why did they wait until amended budget?
Let me see if we actually detailed it out in that memo or if it just.
Can I piggyback on to Bijou's question? Does the entire project get moved over to the next year, or is it just a portion of the project that?
Is left.
Is left. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Camera, continue on.
All right. So next we'll be going over Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery. You can find this on page 20 in your packet and page 16 of the online document. The Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery Special Revenue Fund is restricted to use for the operations and maintenance of the city-owned cemetery. This fund will be used for repairs to the grounds and features and other maintenance projects. It was opened in fiscal year 20, 2009 and operates as part of the Parks and Recs Department. Revenues from this fund come from burial rights, sales less 15% of the required perpetual fund. Revenues are projected to be a little over 2.1 million, and expenditures are a little bit over 1.7 million. With the expansion that just finished up on the cemetery, we're projecting a higher revenue in burial rights and sales, and the expenditures correlate with the expansion of the cemetery. They have increased due to the memorial cost of goods as well as maintenance and irritation, or irrigation repairs.
Questions?
I got a question.
John? I'm not sure if you might be able to answer this, but there's been some question as to the sale of the burial, I guess the sites. What I heard was some people actually, that are not actually residents, but they're buying in, I guess, numbers, and which really doesn't benefit our citizens, but at the same time, they might be doing it collectively to take advantage of the cheap sites.
So that's not, that's a very valid question. That is not part of the budget discussion?
Okay. I was just wondering if she had a.
She's not, I mean, that will.
I can find an answer for you, for sure.
Well, that, I tell you, that really needs, if you want to hear the story on that, then we need to get the cemetery guys to come into a work session and present an update on that. Because that is, it is happening, or at least some version of that. And it's actually, I think with the expansion, probably accelerated somewhat.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to.
Mike, could we schedule some work session for that, please? Okay. So it's a, that is a, that'll be a good portion of a work session for us. All right. Any other questions?
So next we'll be going over the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, which can be found on page 23 of the packet and page 19 of the online document. The Capel Recreation Development Corporation Special Revenue Fund is used for improvements and maintenance to recreation facilities, including the Andy Brown Park System, the Trail System, and the Arts Center. CRDC was established to undertake projects for youth and adult amateur athletics, entertainment and public gathering facilities, exhibitions and museum facilities, parks and recreation facilities, and more. Revenues come from the 1.4% sales tax. Revenues for fiscal year 22 are projected to be 2.5 million, a little over that, and total expenditures are a little over 3.3 million. Overall net art center revenues and expenditures are up due to a full year of operations. The decrease is in the transfer outs for expenditures. We also see in the CRDC the total decrease of 55% for the fiscal 20, from the fiscal year 21 amendment.
Hi, man.
Brianna?
I'm sorry, just, I'm going to go back to the question that John had and pose this actually to Mike. When we do have him come, if you don't mind, I, and I'm thinking this is where you were going, but I would like this question answered from the, from the sales perspective. How many are for, like, what's the breakdown between?
You're talking cemetery now.
Yeah.
Cemetery, yes. I said going back to John's cemetery.
She changed funds on me there.
Sorry, I said going back to John's question about the cemetery.
Okay.
If we get a breakdown, this is what I'm looking for maybe because that goes with you, but sales breakdown of residents versus non-residents, and then, and then also on top of that question of, are we seeing block sales per se? I don't know what you call it, but some sort of grouping by, by people who are then benefiting. So, and I think then that's how we would tie it into these numbers.
It happens.
Does that help, John?
Yeah. That's a good point, too. What I heard was a family member lives in Capel by 15 blocks who lives in Camero's. That's what I heard.
Just so you'll know, we had that discussion.
Right.
That was the discussion.
That's exactly what happened.
But that's what the direction, we talked about that at the council.
Agreed.
We indicated that that was a possibility, it was going to happen.
Agreed, yes.
And it is happening.
Agreed. And so I, and exactly. And so I think for new council members, it helps to level things. So apologies for going on the side note, but I wanted to somehow tie that back to the sales numbers.
Right.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't realize you.
Any questions?
Any questions on CRDC? Don, you need to wait a little bit here.
Sorry. Brianna's already shut me down.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Transfers out, transfer outs to the general fund, is that to cover expenses, or what are the, I guess, what are the transfer outs? I guess that's my question. And we can't just move funds from this fund to the general fund, right? Is it for expenses that are covered by overhead or something?
So the 689,000 transfer out is 35% of the sales tax revenue to cover 50% of park admin and operations and 100% of the core and tenants.
Okay. Just for clarity's sake, so if I back up, and you may not have the answer to this, and that's fine, but fiscal year 20, transfer out was $7 million. So was that something more specific? I mean, is that, it's unfair to ask you, I know, because you weren't prepared for questions from two years ago, but it's just a large amount, I was just curious.
It was a transfer from CRDC fund to the Art Center Construction Fund.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
She might know.
So, no, that makes sense. Okay, so there are things we can transfer funds out of this, transfer funds out of here to cover?
Yes, because the Art Center is being run through the CRDC fund, we could transfer it towards the construction.
Got it.
Jennifer, why don't you also let him know the transfer for operations was approved how?
It was published in the paper many, many years ago, and we said that we were going to take some of that revenue that was in the CRDC and cover the original four projects that were built in 1999, or that were voted on in 1999.
Okay.
So that was the Aquatic Rec Center, Wagon Wheel Park, Trails. So that's what we've come up with, you know, 100% of the core, we're using that transfer to help cover those costs.
Okay. Makes sense.
That was approved by council.
Yes. It was approved by council and we advertised it in the paper.
Okay.
So is that similar for the 2021?
The 1.3?
Yeah, 2.9?
Yes. That's the 35% of the sales tax collections. And we started, I, don't hold me to it, but I think we were doing like 75%. And we just saw that number getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we said, wait a minute. So we dropped it to 35%, and now we are starting to use some of that money that's been building up in the general fund to cover those costs.
Part of the reasoning is also the fund wasn't sufficiently approved for 20 years or. The idea is, the idea was if the fund, if the sales tax wasn't renewed, it was a way for the city to incorporate the cost through time for maintenance and operation, utilizing those funds, understanding that they would eventually run out. That's why it's a decreasing amount in the walk forward.
And the original election, it could only be used on capital equipment, and it could only be used on those four projects. So once they were built, there was no more capital we could do with it. So we started transferring it to cover the maintenance.
Kevin?
So I see up here where it says art center revenue, you know, propose, you know, $500,000. Revenue from things like the core, and so where does, where does that go?
That's in the general fund.
That's in the general fund?
Mm-hmm. We don't operate the core through the CRDC fund, we operate it through the general fund.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah. So, Mike, I'm going back to the email you sent us to on May 24th, or May 5th about amended budget for expenses, FY 21 for arts centers, 3.0 year-to-date expenses. Do you remember that?
I, I remember sending the email, I couldn't tell you exactly what the details are.
Yeah, the number, so I'm looking at that now. The expense was 3.0, but the revenue, we didn't have it, so we were running at a loss. But we, I do see on the budget that we did collect $11 million in sales tax, better than we adopted budget was.
$5 million.
Right. So did we use some of that, or how did?
Well, that goes to the, at the bottom line, when you see the amended budget with the revenues and expenditures. The amended budget shows a total gain to the CRDC of $1.3 million. That's even after taking out the increase, if you will, of the amended expenditures and the decrease in the revenues. So the answer is yes. That's how it works. The money stays in the fund.
Right. Now, this year, the budget is much, much smaller.
As far as the.
The recreation CRDC fund.
Yes.
And therefore, you know, funding for art center will be also less.
I believe the art center is, actually, maybe possibly, I don't think it's $3 million. I don't know if you all know.
No, you got to back out that 689,000 because that's the transfer to the general fund. So if you back out 700,000, it's what, 2.6?
Yes. So we are maintaining the staff level at the same level, even though we are expecting sales tax reduction.
Right. When we went into this, part of that discussion was, we hadn't even had an opportunity to see what this thing does fully operational. This will be the first season we do that. And in the discussions with the council back in a few years ago, it was going to take us about three or four years to find out, what does it really take to operate from a personnel standpoint? What can we really generate from a income standpoint? So we knew we were going to be operating at a deficit.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on CRDC? Next? That was next.
That was next.
All right. Before we go to general discussion, does anybody have any questions? All right. Item number five, general discussion, Mr. Land.
Well, as far as this evening goes, you had an opportunity to go through the enterprise fund to get something a little different by not going page by page through all the special revenue funds. I know that's a little different for the council members that have gone through this budget process before. So, you know, if there's any feedback to that being part of the process, if that's fine with you, that's, you know, that's one way we can move forward. And we're just set for Thursday night, 6:00 PM, to go over the general fund.
I do have a question. How to, you know, we still have the red light enforcement special revenue fund. Is that going to fall off the, how do you, how do you get rid of that?
Yeah. I'll let the accountant answer if it's an accounting issue.
So whenever the legislature, legislature shut down that fund essentially, they said you can use it for a couple of things. And if you'll recall, we approved the body cams for police. And what we did was we encumbered the funds for the purchase and the five years of maintenance. So you will continually see until we pay off that last little bit of maintenance, $0 in revenue, $0 in expenditures, and then that amended amount will just roll over until it's gone.
You remember that?
I do.
Well, I remember the discussion. I don't, I didn't remember, I didn't remember it was going to take five years to roll it off the books, but that's okay. So is there any fund balance left in that, or is it, is it at zero?
We used all of those dollars.
On, on the cameras?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Bijou?
Yeah, I want to thank the staff for setting up the email address for the budget input. So my question is, did we get any inputs from the residents?
None, no.
Okay.
Anybody have, did I hear a "oh"? I guess not. Okay. I thought somebody said something. Sorry about that. Moving on, we're going to go to our final citizen's appearance. Do we have anybody else sign up? Ashley?
No, sir. Would anybody like to sign up?
All right. So we did, we did open up a second citizen's appearance for citizens should they wish to comment after our discussions. We will only be doing this during the budget work sessions. The normal city council agendas are generally items that we vote on, so the public hearings already have a citizens' comments section built into them, so I didn't, I do not believe it's really necessary during a regular city council meeting. Just FYI, if you notice, the notice of our city council meetings is coming out a few days earlier, and that should help publicize that a bit better, and we're still working on that. What else did I? You don't know.
No, I do not know.
This is my mental list, Mike, you're supposed to remember that.
You know, I talked about your mental list.
Yes. All right. With no citizen's appearance, there'd be no further business before the council, and we are adjourned at 7:27 PM.